All of you to the regular meeting of the city council. Five at 7:00 PM. May we have the roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Chen?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Man?
Here.
Mayor Sternquist?
Here. Thank you. We move to item three, the invocation. And Jerry, welcome. Jerry is the owner of Wonder Cleaners and Draperies located at 9136 Las Tunas Drive. We'll be providing our invocation. And Jerry, thank you so much because you come so often and do this for us, and we really do appreciate it.
I'm happy to do it, Mayor. And before I give my invocation tonight, I just want to say that this year, I'm celebrating 70 years on the same corner, under the same ownership, family ownership. So I'm happy that I'm still here.
What month?
And Temple City is such a great city.
What month is the 70th anniversary?
Of Wonder Cleaners.
Yes. Is it July, or?
Actually, November. So it's this year.
Oh, November.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, November the 5th. Yeah.
You opened it when you were like, what, five?
I started working. I started working when I was 11. So that'll tell you how old I am.
Well, I knew how old you were.
Before I pray too, I just want to say that I don't know if it's ever been done before, or anybody's ever mentioned it, but not every city offers an invocation. And we're one of the great cities that do. So whether it's me or somebody else, I just want to say thank you because we're commanded in God's scripture to pray for the leaders of our country, whether it be from federal all the way down to city. So thank you for allowing us to do that. Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we welcome your presence again tonight as we conduct the business of our great city. I pray that you would grant the necessary wisdom to our mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members, along with staff, as they make decisions for our benefit. We have much to thank you for with the recent grand opening of the one-of-a-kind new playground at Live Oak Park and the new addition of artwork along Las Tunas. Our concerts in the park on Wednesday nights have gotten off to a great start with over 1,000 in attendance. Temple City's got talent and knows how to dance. I want to thank you also for our commissioners that are here tonight that give so selflessly of their time and efforts as they conduct the business of our city without any remuneration, and just thank you for their service. Father, as we celebrate our nation's independence this Friday, I pray that it would be done in a safe and especially a sane manner. Help people realize how illegal celebrations affect our pets, our veterans, with PSD especially. In closing, Lord, I want to pray for armed services around the world that protect the freedom that we celebrate this week, also our deputies that help keep us safe, and our firefighters that protect our property. They will be especially busy this weekend. We ask this all in your honor and for your glory. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Jerry. I'm going to ask Lance, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the unity of the soul.
Did she say Lance?
I did, but I don't think.
He didn't hear you?
He didn't hear. It's okay.
It's okay.
Thank you. We move to item five, ceremonial matters, presentations. And I'm thrilled to be able to have our newly appointed and reappointed commissioners here with us today. So Peggy, did you want to talk about the process or anything?
Sure, just so it... Thank you, Mayor. The city recruited to fill nine commissioner seats with term expiring on June 30, 2025. The commission recruitment ad hoc committee interviewed applicants who were not current commissioners in May and recommended that council reappoint the current commissioners whose term expired on June 30, 2025. The ad hoc committee also recommended two final applicants to be interviewed by the city council to fill the vacant seats on the planning commission. On June 24, the city council interviewed the two final planning commissioner applicants. And at this time, the city council is requested to either receive the recommendation from the city commissioner recruitment ad hoc committee regarding commissioner appointments, open discussion regarding the recommendation from the ad hoc committee and provides direction to staff, or accept the ad hoc committee's recommendation and adopt the following resolutions of making the appointments for the commissioners. And then finally, to direct the city clerk to administer the official oath of office.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any questions from council members? None? Okay. Open public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? Okay, I'm going to close public comment. And if there's no final questions, may I have a motion, please, and then a roll call?
Mayor Sternquist, I would move that we adopt resolution number 25-5822, confirming the appointment of John Cordes, Kevin Chang, and Jeff Su to the planning commission with term ending June 30, 2028, and also resolution number 25... Lance, do you want to take them separately, or should we do them all at once?
I can do them all.
Okay. And resolution number 25-5823, confirming appointment of Lance Worldy, Kathy Burrows, and Joanne Russo to the Parks and Recreation Commission with term ending June 30, 2028, and adopt resolution number 25-5824, confirming appointment of Joe Catalon, Michael Stoll, and Jeffrey Zoo to the Transportation and Public Safety Commission with term ending June 30, 2028, and also request the city clerk to administer the oath of office to those commissioners.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Man?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. I would like to invite the new commissioners up to take the oath of office, please.
Are you going to do the commission separately?
One commission?
I don't have the old ones.
Do you want to do the commission separately, or all at once?
Do you want to do... I have these for the...
All at once, okay. They're facing the audience so Jerry can take your photo.
So I guess the old ones are together? Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
Say your name. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and...
The what?
The Constitution.
No, I think so.
Constitution of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
The State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear.
That I will bear.
True faith.
True faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation.
That I take this obligation.
Freely.
Freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose.
Or purpose.
Of the creation.
Of the creation.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my duty to do.
Of my duty to do.
Congratulations. If I could have Jeff and Kevin stay there for just a second? Congratulations. I did say that. I should have taken the key for... Congratulations. Sternquist, and then if we can have... Jerry, did you get a picture of them?
Yeah.
Okay. So if I could have Kevin and Jeff stay up?
Rest in peace.
You have rest and you can sit down. So Kevin?
You want the certificate, no?
These two. They already have their certificate inside.
Okay.
And Jeff?
We're on a tight budget.
Would you all like to be in the picture?
Sure.
Welcome.
Okay, we do?
Get him out. Keep going. There we go, right there.
These are not... This is not... Mayor, Councilmember Chavez?
Okay, a little higher. A little higher. There we go. Perfect. Okay. Great, thank you.
It's nice to have new members. And at some point in time, we're going to have the people that are retiring from the commission come so that we can thank them also. Okay. Glasses went somewhere.
Sorry.
Okay. We move to item 6A, public comments on items not listed. I'm sorry?
Yes, 5B.
Oh, 5B, sorry. Proclamation of the Parks and Recreation Month. And we are going to have the Parks and Rec commissioners come on up.
Not Adam?
And Adam. Okay, I think it's a sage one. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Launched in 1985, this year marks the 40th anniversary of Park and Recreation Month. This year's theme, Build Together, Play Together, celebrates how parks and recreation professionals help create thriving communities. This July is dedicated to recognizing and celebrating more than 160,000 full-time park and recreation professionals, along with hundreds of thousands of part-time and seasonal workers and volunteers who maintain our parks and provide enhanced quality of life services. Together, we're building and maintaining sustainable parks and green spaces for current and future generations. Together, we're building thriving communities focused on health and well-being. And together, we help people play and connect through yoga, sports, youth and senior services, and more. Join us this July as we celebrate Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Temple City. This is one long, big one. Adam?
So Adam, I'm going to have you read part of this proclamation, and then I'll read the other portion. I think it's appropriate.
So the city of Temple City, proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month, July 2025. Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes physical, emotional, and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed fitness, play, and activity. And whereas Parks and Recreation supports the economic vitality of communities by partnering with local businesses and nonprofits and offering events for residents, engagement. And whereas Parks and Recreation creates memorable experiences through youth sports and enrichment activities, teen centers and programs, senior activity centers, adult fitness enrichment programs, free community events, and beyond. And whereas Parks and Recreation fosters social cohesiveness in communities by celebrating diversity, providing spaces to come together peacefully, modeling compassion, promoting social equity, connecting social networks, and ensuring all people have access to its benefits. And whereas Parks and Recreation supports human development and endless learning opportunities that foster social, intellectual, physical, and emotional growth in people of all ages and abilities.
Whereas Parks and Recreation strengthens community identity by providing facilities and services that reflect and celebrate community character, heritage, culture, aesthetics, and landscape. And whereas Parks and Recreation facilitates community problem issues resolution by providing safe spaces to come together peacefully and serving as key points of service, helping our communities heal both physically and emotionally. And whereas Parks and Recreation sustains and stewards our natural resources by protecting habitats and open space, connecting people to nature, and promoting the ecological function of parkland. And whereas Parks and Recreation supports safe, vibrant, attractive, progressive communities that make life better through positive alternatives offered in their recreational opportunities. And whereas Parks and Recreation remains versatile and innovative in providing vital services to communities through local, national, or global emergencies, all while adhering to guidelines set forth by governing agencies. And now, therefore, I, Cynthia Sternquist, Mayor of the city of Temple City, California, to hereby proclaim July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Temple City. Sign this day July 1, 2025. I just want to thank you all. I mean, this is one of the longest proclamations I think that I've ever had to read. And so thank you, Adam, for doing that. I didn't want to lose my voice. But thank you so much. You know, Tom and I served both on Parks and Recreation Commission with Kathy for me for 19 years. Tom, maybe 16 or 15?
No, I think it was 10.
10 years. So our hearts are always with Parks and Recreation. And there's a reason why this proclamation is so long, is because this is the heart of our city. This is where we build community. And it's just a really special time, and I'm thrilled to be able to present this to the commissioners, who do so much work to ensure that this all gets done. And of course, to you, Adam, who work so diligently to make sure that the things that are important to our community are relevant and definitely for the time that we are currently in. So thank you, Adam. So let's take a picture and have the staff take a picture also. I mean, not the staff, I'm sorry, the council. Just a little more. Not that that's... Do you want to... Join your chair. Yeah? My chair, my chair. The chairs in Italy.
This way a little bit, Mayor. Very perfect. Everybody smiling. Okay. Now I count to three. Everybody say Campa Palusa. One, two, three.
Campa Palusa.
All right, good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Oh, you're welcome.
I thought that's the way to get a little...
I guess you keep that. Yeah?
Should have summarized.
Okay. All right. So we move to item...
Six.
Six. And we have a public comments not listed on the agenda. And we have one speaker. And Rory McNair?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Rory McNair, and I live on...
Rory, would you mind picking it up a little bit so we can hear you better? Thank you.
And I live on 8821 Elm Avenue. I'm here tonight because a formal inquiry into a single administrative action has led to deeply disturbing discoveries. Discoveries that every single resident deserves to know. My investigation has revealed a government that acts like the ethics rules that this council swore to uphold simply do not exist. This city's own written responses provide the proof. Our home, Temple City, is being run without critical safeguards. Over the past three months, I've learned how the city has zero written rules for investigating wrongdoing by its own officials, zero procedures to protect your private financial information, and no policy to stop them from altering public records to hide the truth. I'm sure there is some thoughtful reasoning behind these decisions. After all, this council brings over 45 combined years of public service managing our tax dollars. In another development, I must report something significant. The city of Temple City is now under formal investigation by the Los Angeles County District Attorney's, Los Angeles County District Attorney's Public Integrity Division. The DA is investigating the council's Brown Act violation from June 3, city council meeting. They're also investigating the deliberate tampering with the official meeting video, apparently to hide the evidence. So I'm genuinely curious, how should residents feel confident in a government that operates without written rules for accountability and is currently under criminal investigation for a cover-up? I'm confident this council has insights into how exactly this situation strengthens public trust, insights that a taxpayer, a layperson like me, just can't quite grasp. So in closing, I trust this council will eventually provide the public with the answers it rightfully deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNair. And I just would like to clarify that Mr. McNair is the one who brought the formal investigation to the DA. So... And I'm sure you wouldn't mind me sharing that. All right. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. And we are going to move to item seven, the consent calendar. Anyone?
Are you going to say anything, or?
Madam Mayor?
We just want a motion.
Yeah, just...
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Man?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. Okay. We are going to move to, is that item eight? Public hearing, adoption of resolution number 25-5819, adopting the annual appropriations limit for fiscal year 2025, 2026. The city council is requested to approve the annual appropriation. Introduction by our own city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist and members of the council. I'm going to use Councilmember Chavez's favorite word that I always use with these actions. This is a perfunctory action of the council. The GAN limit is a function of Prop 13, which required us to analyze the amount of revenue that we can bring in in order to provide services to the community. For decades, the city has been under that appropriations limit that has been available to the public for the last 15 days. We went a little bit longer. And so with that, we meet the requirements of the GAN limit as required by the state constitution. So we ask for your formal approval. I'm here for any questions. And Alex Kung, our admin services director and city treasurer, is also here for any questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Mr. Kung? From any council members?
I do have one, Madam Mayor.
Sure, of course.
Just more academic questions. So I mean, we're...
Yes, sir.
Our budget for our city is not very big. So... But obviously, there are bigger cities, cities with much bigger budgets. So this limit is based on previous years, right? And then they add inflation to it. So it's not based on per capita?
That's absolutely correct, Councilmember Yu. It's not based on capita. It's not based... It's not per capita. It's a calculation. Alex, can maybe you want to give the Reader's Digest version of that just real briefly?
It can be based upon the population. So there is a formula that is based either on the population or the factor that's provided by the state. I apologize. So there is a combination of factors that can be taken into account. And so we can take the highest amount. But as Mr. Cook has mentioned, we're $11,864,366 under the appropriations limit.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close public hearing. And we move to unfinished business. There is none. Oh, I'm sorry.
We need a resolution.
Oh, can we have the resolution?
So, Madam Mayor, I would move to that the council adopt resolution number 25-5819, adopting the annual appropriations limit for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Man?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. Okay, we move to item nine, unfinished business. There's none, new business none. We do have an update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist and members of the council. As you... It was reported to you at your last law enforcement meeting, the last several months in terms of residential burglaries has been very high. I'm not going to try to sugarcoat it in any way. It's been a rough about six months. So we are looking, and the team has strategized, we've met with the captain as well, to look at some things that we can do. So for the next 30 days or so, not telling you where, not telling you when, but there will be undercover units throughout Temple City, trying to track down and see how much we can catch. I can report to you, last Thursday, there was an undercover operation that did take place. Three arrests were made. So we are... So there's some positivity in that sense of where we're moving forward to. The other thing that we're going to be doing as well is we... The team has identified four locations for additional flock cameras. Those will be implemented within the next 60 days. I apologize for a little bit of delay in that. We were waiting for new pricing and other factors with flock. So the perimeter of the city is taken care of with the flock camera system. And remember, those are the license plate readers, does not catch the person's face, looks at the license plate. And so when a criminal activity happens, or something's reported throughout the flock system, and every city, every surrounding city within the San Gabriel Valley has the flock system. So if something happens in Rosemead and comes in, or a car comes into Temple City, that will ding our team, a technical term there I'm using, and we'll let them know that that plate is, has, you know, has been flagged, and that is a stolen car. Or that's been a car that's been involved in a incident. So we'll have four new cameras. And we're going to focus on some of the interior parts, interior streets in the city, especially some cut-through streets and some collector streets as well. So we'll have that up in the next 60 days. We will be doing, and I just passed out a draft of what we will do, and send out a mailer to every single resident about residential burglaries, just some tips. It will be translated into Chinese and Spanish as well, and just a one-pager that goes out to every household. And just some, just general tips on what to do for your house. But there is, and as much as people and the reports that we get back are a lot of open doors, unlocked doors, open windows. But we, as a team, are doing all that we can. And I know the dedicated team is doing all they can as well. The other thing we're going to be doing is we're going to try to go to high-profile type of events, like concerts at the park, churches with large congregation of Temple City residents as well, targeting those events and activities where we can have the most impact. Not that we are... We love to have visitors in the city. We love having, enjoying them, and them being part of our community events and activities. But we want to hit them, we want to hit the community where they're at. On top of that, as part of the most recent budget that you passed, you converted our parking enforcement officers into community services officers as well. So that will give us an additional tool to provide to our dedicated team, our patrol team, and our traffic team. They'll be able to take traffic reports. They will be able to take non-injury traffic reports. reports. They will be able to take burglary reports after, unfortunately, it's usually well after an incident has happened. Non-injury, non-hazardous events, that team will be able to take care of. So that, within the next couple of months, that will be in place as well. So, and we are going to do some targeted door knocks as well, just our team hitting the neighborhood, kind of hitting the beat, and just knocking on doors, especially if we've had some burglaries in an area as well. And also too, some of just additional signage. So those are some of the things that we're going to be doing over the next few months. And with the team's hard work and our patrol team's hard work, hopefully we'll get those numbers down. But it has been a hard month, a hard several months for us. So those are some of the things that we'll be doing.
We talked about the sign, Brian.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Sternquist. Also too, we'll have signage, some of the electronic signs, we're going to rent a couple more, we'll put those throughout, not just in the thoroughfares of the cities, but some of the, on some of the collector streets that people drive through. You'll see in the draft flyer that we have, residential burglaries are happening more often in the day than at nighttime. Nighttime is the low occurrence of residential burglaries. They are happening, generally speaking, when people are out and they're at work, or they're not home, or they're running errands. These are sophisticated crews, and they are taking sophisticated methods to do that. On top of that too, the, one of the beauties of having our LA County Sheriff's Department as our law enforcement arm is that they have a lot of broader resources. One of those resources that you've met many times before throughout the years is our Major Crimes Unit. And that Major Crimes Unit targets and specifically looks for those types of crimes. They look at specific trends and techniques that burglars and these crews are using in order to target communities. And it's no solace to us, but we're, the entire San Gabriel Valley is getting hit, Arcadia is getting hit, other places are getting hit, but we do have the luxury, and I know other agencies actually utilize some of the LA County Sheriff's resources as well, when they're struggling and they're having a hard time trying to kind of solve and deal with the rise in residential burglaries in the city. So those are some of the things that we're going to try to do. We'll continue to do the community outreach that we do, but we're going to look to be a little bit more targeted in that community outreach, really specifically hitting our Temple City residents at places where they congregate, where they live, and where they live their lives on a day-to-day basis. So that's where, that's what we're looking to do. Lastly, from a, I'm sorry to keep dealing with the public safety issue, but this weekend is Fourth of July. We do struggle with illegal fireworks. It is a five thousand dollar fine if you, if you light off fireworks. So our team will be out, our public safety personnel will be out as well, looking. Please call the sheriff's station if you do hear or you do see any illegal fireworks. It is illegal to do that, and you will be caught and you will be fined. That's my report for tonight, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I ask, can you share how the public can access?
There's just a draft, but we'll have, we are actually going to distribute that to every household. So we're going to, we're going to be mailing that out, and then we're going to put it on our website, and we're going to be putting it on our social media as well.
Okay, so more info to come?
More info to come.
Okay.
I would suggest that we have available maybe at our summer concerts as well, since there's a lot of people there. Maybe we could have them in the city booth or something.
We, we're planning on having a city booth out there for several of the remaining summer concerts.
Perfect. And I think we have, don't we have a yearly meeting with the, I mean, what do we call Jerry, the, with the sheriff, with the police?
The captain.
National Night Out. Is that coming up soon? That's August.
August.
Yeah, so we'll have it there then, probably. Yeah. Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Updates from our city attorney this evening?
I don't have an update for you. I just wanted to say it's a pleasure to be here, and if you need anything, just please let our office know.
We're happy to have you. All right. Council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings?
I can start. Sure. Yeah, we have. I have a report. Mayor Protem Man and I met with the Standing Committee of the Temple City Unified School District. Excuse me. That meeting was held on Thursday, June 26th. Several items of discussion. Our public safety supervisor, Jose Almaya, provided an update on e-bikes. That has been, as you know, an issue in the city, and I know the school has taken that very seriously as well. They recently, actually before the school season, year was up, did an inspection of bikes at Temple City High School, and a couple were identified as unlawful, and I guess parents were contacted regarding that. And of course, they also talked about, and we think we mentioned, there's a CHP training course that is offered for free online that parents can take advantage of as well, and students as well. So we're going to try to work with them to get some kind of link on our website as well, I think, on that. Safe routes to schools, always the traffic concerns and safety issues near Temple City High School, seems to be an ongoing problem. Couple of items were brought to our attention, the traffic on Lemon, and particularly if one of the sides of Lemon has no sidewalk, as many of you may know, and apparently it's being used by students to access the crosswalk, so we're going to look into that as well. I provided that information, Adam Williams did as well, to our city manager to look further into that. Also, we were told that hold September 12th as the grand opening for the stadium, or the Temple City High School stadium. They're going to have a formal grand opening on September 12th, which we'll all be invited to.
Is that a game also?
I think there's a game that evening as well.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, so they're going to combine it all with a game. I asked them if it was an easy opponent, they said yes.
[laughing].
It's always good to win the game that you're having a ceremony like that on. Adam also presented an update on the things going on around Temple City. Of course, our Live Oak Park playground, Capitol project on Baldwin and Live Oak, I mean, Las Tunas, repaving issues that we've been doing, and of course, the beautification of Las Tunas, and of course, the cloverleaf projects. And so we filled them in on a lot of that information. And other than that, William, do you have anything else to add to that?
Well, that was a pretty comprehensive report. I think the only thing I'll add is, I think the standing committee meeting that we have been having for a number of years now has been really beneficial to build a better collaborative relationship with our partners at the school district. We always say how, at the end of the day, we're serving the same community, and to be able to leverage each other's resources, especially the communication channels that each of us respectively possess, that, that seems to be a great tool that we've been able to help each other on. So I know we also have been scheduling ahead of time the annual, we're trying to make it a more of a routine matter to have the full body, full council and full board to meet, so.
I think that's already in our calendar for next year.
Yeah, it is.
Forgot the date, but it's sometime next year. Also, as you mentioned, we do have a next scheduled meeting for our Standing Committee meeting on September 25th. So, yeah, as William mentioned, this has been a great joint venture, so to speak, and I'm glad we're able to keep it up, and I think it's very beneficial for the entire city. As William mentioned, it's, you know, I remember when we first got on council, there seemed to be a misunderstanding of the fact that the students in the school were also our residents, and didn't quite get that. And I think some of you may remember, there was a certain disconnect between the school board and the city council for some unknown reason. But that is long gone, and complete cooperation. I know the superintendent and Brian speak regularly, and so it's just for everybody's benefit. It's a win-win situation, there's no question about that.
It's also very nice to see the superintendent come to our sheriff's meetings in the morning, and...
And also school board members at city events.
And school board members, the superintendent and many of the school board members came out to the opening of the new playground, and it was just really nice to see that also. And I know many of us go to school functions, right? Especially these two with having children in the schools. All right, are there any other ad hoc or standing committee meetings, reports? Then I'd like to dissolve the commissioner recruitment ad hoc. And Stephanie, we just eliminated it, right? We don't need to do anything further with that?
Peggy.
Oh, Peggy?
Yeah.
William said he wanted to say something?
No, I said Peggy will remove it for us.
Oh, Peggy will remove it, yes. Thank you, Peggy. Okay. William, do you want to talk about the ad hoc we met today on Sereno?
Sure, yeah, yeah. Well, you can maybe fill in the tail end of the portion. Yeah, so today, Mayor Sternquist and I did meet with our Parks and Rec Director, Matsumoto, as well as SWA, our consultants, looking at concepts for what we're calling the Sereno Park. And as, for anyone who's followed, it is a very small area in the southwestern part of town. And today's meeting generally focused on how we're going to do the community outreach, because we truly believe that that's a foundational component of what that space is eventually going to become. So right now, we're targeting to have the community outreach to be sometime at the end of July. I think we tentatively have a date of July 26th, which is a Saturday scheduled, but if that changes, we certainly will, will make it publicly, make it publicly aware so that people can join. We also discussed with the, with SWA, some key elements, site elements within the park. It is a residential neighborhood, so it is a significant change to the character of that part of the city. And so we want it to be understanding and conducive, and have the elements be conducive to that part of town. So there were a lot of interesting ideas discussed. I recommended that we have a further discussion after we get more feedback directly from the surrounding community, and not for us to insert a lot of our own ideas beforehand, even though I know we have deep opinions about what we would like to see. We also want to manage expectations because we, it is not a lot of space. It's actually half the size of Primrose Park, if I recall, that's what Ryan, I think Adam may have mentioned that too. So if you've been to Primrose Park, it's literally just the portion that the playground equipment occupies and not the remainder of the space. So you can see how that's, the physical constraints of that is also a big challenge. But nevertheless, we were very excited. We've worked with SWA on multiple projects, including the recent grand opening of the Live Oak Park playground area. So I'm very excited to continue this endeavor. And Mayor Sternquist, if you have anything else to add?
Just, I think, the tail end, once you signed off. We talked a little bit about having that park be different than Primrose Park and the new playground at Live Oak Park. Being more of an area that appeals to multi-age levels, not just children, but to grandparents or middle-aged people, where they all felt that there was something there at that park for them. So they thought that that was helpful information, and Adam mentioned at the meeting that Sereno in Spanish, is that correct, means serene? And so it seems kind of fit to have that park be a place where it's relaxing and welcoming. So other than that, I think you were there pretty much for most of it. So I'm looking forward to the next steps. They really do have a great handle on outreach to the public, and I thought that the plans that they provided were exemplary for us, and we felt very comfortable with the type of outreach they were going to do. All right, so let's see. Council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember Yu, do you have anything?
Nothing really to add. As already been mentioned, the opening of the playground at Live Oak Park was just wonderful thing, and then truly put our city parks on the map. I mean, in addition to Primrose Park, and now we have a very nice playground, perhaps like the pickle, maybe look kind of like a pickleball park, but it's very, very nice. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Chen?
The Temple City National Little League All-Star Team is playing at Live Oak Park right now in a battle against East Alhambra All-Stars for the District 18 championship title. So, go Temple City.
Yes.
And that's why we're running this meeting a little fast, so Ed and I can get over there.
I want to go.
You can go.
Okay. Councilmember Chavez?
Well, he kind of stole my thunder, I was going to mention that, because I had mentioned it last week. But yeah, the All-Stars from Temple City National have made it to the championship game, so we're proud of them, and hopefully they can end it tonight. But if they do lose tonight, they get a, if necessary, game tomorrow. So they have two shots of winning the championship. And of course, as those unfamiliar, unfamiliar with Little League process, once they win district, then they move on to what we call section, which I'm not sure where it is, but they travel, and they, actually, the eight to ten-year-olds can go as high as a state championship. It's the ones you see on TV at Williamsport, those are the ten to twelve-year-olds. And actually, our Temple City American team that plays out of Live Oak is in the district championship for that division tonight.
Wow.
So they're playing for the championship tonight as well. Over at Granada, I think. I'm not sure.
Go Temple City.
Yeah, Temple City, two Temple City teams in championships, so that's a good thing. What else? Oh, Live Oak Park, like I said, that was amazing turnout. I don't get over there as much as my wife does. She walks our dog every, every day pretty much there. She says every time she's gone by there, it's been crowded. And I know Jerry's been there taking photos, and it's just been so busy. It's such a, such a big success and hit amongst the community. It just, it's probably more than we had even envisioned. But it's a beautiful park and so far, very well-used. So congratulations again to everyone who was, participated in that. We had our Parks and Rec Commissioners here tonight, of course, staff, and just did a fantastic job. And the pickleball courts, being over at the baseball field the last couple of weeks, they're thriving as well. Putting in those extra courts is amazing. You'd think that it would have fallen off a little bit, but now they're even busier than they were before. In fact, we're thinking, I know I had talked to Adam briefly, that we may have to make some additional improvements there, because it's so busy, heavily used, that the grass areas around those courts are getting worn out. And they're tracking, unfortunately, tracking dirt and everything onto the courts, which is not a good thing. So we're going to have to look into that probably at some future date. But, you know, it's a good problem to have, I suppose, but, but you know, the tennis courts are still being used as well. So tennis has not ended, and they're still being used as well. So I went by there last night, I found, I went by the park, and Jane and I were walking with the dog, and the entire park was just filled between Little League, pickleball, the playground, people walking the path, just everything. I mean, it's, it's a very, very well-used park, but very organized as well, and people seem to have, be having an enjoyable time hanging out at Live Oak Park. So it makes, it makes you kind of happy to see that as a community. So anyway, that's it. Thank you.
I know Brian took his niece and nephew to the park twice, you said, and what did they feel about the park?
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up. So it's nice to hear that from the kids' perspective also.
And by the way, I know that it's for, mostly for kids, but I've seen some adults on that slide. It's a big slide, so it'll hold an adult or a small adult, I guess, but yeah, they'll go down that.
So Adam, how is the mayor's pickleball tournament coming along? We definitely need all of these mayors, have been mayors, to form a team and participate. And I know the city of Doherty has already said that they're practicing, so.
[inaudible]
All right. Councilmember Vincent, I was going to say, I'm looking right at you. Vice.
Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem. Vice Mayor.
Mayor Protem.
William.
Mayor Protem confuses people.
I know, it's that word.
Yeah. But thank you, Mayor Sternquist. And while we're on the topic of Live Oak Park, I want to extend my appreciation to our entire Parks and Rec staff who made that event really successful. I was actually wondering how we were going to keep people out of the perimeter of the park while we were doing the ribbon cutting, and all of you did a fantastic job. So it was obviously a well-tended event, appreciate the attention to detail with all the workshops, even some of the goodie bags. And I think the prevailing comment that I appreciated about the new playground was they were... comment that I appreciated about the new playground was, there were many longtime residents who instantly knew what the rocket was referencing. And for the kids, it was an opportunity to, what I like to call, kinda bridge generations and kinda share in, kinda like a common symbol, icon, whatever you wanna call it. It's something that brings us together. So, so seeing it open and seeing it well-used, I actually took, took my boys there the Sunday after, and yeah, it was, definitely wasn't as packed as the, the initial day, but like Council member Chavez said, well-attended, well-used park. And I thought it was interesting to hear from one of the staff that said, the moment we announced the date of the grand opening, the picnic shelters just started getting booked up. It's like they were planning for, for that exact date. So that was really, really nice to see. One other thing I wanted to share was, I, I did attend the Temple City Chamber of Commerce Legislative Luncheon this past Friday. I got to hear PCC Board President Alton Wang speak, and he shared a lot of interesting things. So for those of you who may not be aware, we actually, our city is actually broken up into four different Pasadena City College districts. So we technically have four representatives, and Alton Wang is one of them. He also shared that Temple City High School, or, yeah, Temple City High School is the second-largest feeder school into the PCC student body, which, you know, we were really glad to hear, which means that there is a direct nexus between our students and them benefiting from PCC as, as a, as a direct resource. In addition to that, he talked a lot about the collaboration with the school district, kinda along the lines of what Council Member Chavez and I were discussing earlier. I think it was interesting that they're trying to expand the course of college classes and make them available to existing high school students, because the AP classes themselves don't always transfer well to certain schools, whereas the community college credit, there's a much more easier way for them to transfer to a larger pool of schools. So they won't run into this issue of taking an AP class and then not getting the credit for it when they enroll as a freshman somewhere. So that was really interesting to hear. He also talked a little about, a little bit about the fire recovery for the Eaton Fire, and how they were one of the few physical campuses in the city of Pasadena that remained open, and because they had resources to food and shelter, that that was a, that was their way of trying to help the victims of the Eaton Fire during that period of time. And that was actually something I wasn't really aware of, so I was really glad that he, he shared that, that that was something that PCC actively chose to, to stay open and not shutter their doors.
Actually, PCC was one of fire recovery, early fire recovery centers.
Yeah, they used the parking lot quite a bit for a lot of the supplies and things like that, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so that, that was, it was nice to hear kind of their role in the recovery effort in, in Altadena. And then lastly, I think the part that would be a great benefit to our student is, he talked about a Rosemead campus extension that they're building, which potentially could add capacity of 3,000 to 5,000 students.
Wow. Did they say where they were gonna put it?
He mentioned Valley and Rosemead, which I had a hard time picturing the exact block.
So they used to have a campus at Valley and Rosemead.
But this is much, but this is much larger.
Yeah, I think at the time they were using it, it was the, actually, Rose, belonged to Rosemead School District for their adult ed.
Yeah.
And in fact, I almost taught a class there once. I, in fact, I was scheduled to teach a class there, which would've been nice for me, close, but it got rearranged and I never did. But that's been closed now for a few years. I'm glad to hear that they're thinking of doing another one or getting something a little closer, certainly more convenient for students in Temple City, certainly. So that would be nice, yeah, good.
Yeah. So I, I think that location was, was strategic, and, and the very manner that you just described is, for those within PCC's boundaries, even though they technically serve-
Right.
-the broader Southern California region, having it located in Rosemead, at least for Temple City students and residents, does make it a, a big convenience.
I don't know if you mentioned that, but I think at one time, I don't know if they're still doing it, but I think PCC was, had classes offered at the high school. But I, I think they were extension classes. I don't believe they were classes for units. I, Jerry, do you remember that?
Yeah, but I don't know.
Yeah, it's been a number of years now. I don't think they still do it, but they were, they were-
Night school.
Yeah, night school, kind of extension classes. But it wasn't, it wasn't, I don't think they were for credit classes, but-
Yeah, he, he didn't speak specifically about that, but he did mention expanding the coursework that would be available to current high school students, so that they can be working on something that would allow, that would actually help them when they, if they choose to enroll in, in college, so.
Yeah, I have a nephew enrolling in there in August, and, you know, one of the things that people don't realize is, or maybe they do, it's sometimes easier for a student to get into the college of their choice by first attending a junior college-
Oh, absolutely.
-and then transferring to a four-year university-
Absolutely.
-of their choice, rather than coming out of high school. And, you know, I think unfortunately, there's a, something where, you know, some students and some parents think of it as a, not a great way. They want them to go to the, you know, the, the four-year university right off the bat, and say, well, I don't wanna go to junior college. But there's something to be said for that, and, you know, also a lot cheaper to go there. And, and PCC, I don't know if you mentioned this, too, when I was teaching there, they were one of the top, or the top feeder schools for the UC colleges as well. And they probably still are, so, yeah.
He didn't, he didn't mention they had a very high successful transfer rate-
Yeah, they do.
Specifically to UCs as well as the CSUs.
Yeah, yeah, good.
But anyway, it, it's always a pleasure to, to hear Alton Wang share his work on-
He's a very good speaker also.
He, oh, absolutely.
And he's a good speaker. And also, also runs around the Live Oak Park running track.
Does he?
Yes, I see him there quite frequently.
He was at the grand-
He was at the grand opening as well, yes.
Well, I'd just like to, again, thank the staff for the opening and the commissioners that came out for the playground. One of the things that I think is just so important and testimony to not only the work that this council does, but the work that our staff does, and everyone who has, our volunteers, our commissioners, you know, it's very rare, and many of you know that I serve on a lot of regional boards. And when they have functions, it's very rare to not just have the deputies come out. But we had Congresswoman Judy Chu at this event. We had Assembly Member Mike Fong in person at this event, and we had the new Senator Sasha Rene Perez at the event, and Catherine Barger's Chief Deputy, Vicky Paul was there. And every single one of them shared that they would not have missed a Temple City event, no matter if it was an opening of the park, but how appreciative they were of all our work cumulatively, and how dedicated we are as city council members to providing such great opportunities for our residents. So I just wanted to share that with all of you, because every single one of them told me that about this council. So thank you all for all the hard work and diligence you do and bring to the community day in and day out. And it was lovely to have them, and Jerry, you took some wonderful pictures of all of them, and I'd love to send them to them. So, um, let's see. I think with that, we're just gonna move on now to additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, now's the time to do so. Okay, no one else. So I'm gonna close public comment, and we are adjourned to go to the baseball game.